Good afternoon, everyone. We're here for an early start tonight, and we really appreciate our candidates being here to be interviewed. We'd like to start with a roll call.
Councilmember Andrews.
President.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Avasio.
Here. And if you could join us for a salute to the flag. Thanks very much for that. We are now open for public comment for the interviews. If anybody has a comment about any of the candidates or any of the process or anything, now would be the time to approach the podium, not seeing anybody going that way. Is there anyone online? Are we online? We are online?
We are online. We do not have any hands raised from attendees online, and we didn't receive any emailed public comment for this item.
Okay.
For this meeting.
So with no public comments, we will move on to the interviews, and we will start with the Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee. This year's annual advisory board recruitment opened on February 28th and closed on May 9th. Similar to last year, staff contacted all of the new applicants, informing them of the time commitment involved with the body they were applying for, and confirmed with them whether they wish to move forward with their application. New applicants were advised that in-person interviews before the council would be mandatory. Incumbent applicants, whose seats are also being sought by new applicants, were given the option to interview before the council or to submit written responses to the interview questions if they preferred not to participate in an interview. The information in this report includes all of the details of the applicants interviewing before you, either because they are new applicants or incumbents who are seeking to retain their seats. So on the Citizens Tax Oversight Committee, where we start first, it's made up of five residents who are active within the community at large. We did have Christopher McBride to interview, who we understand is not here, not feeling well. And so we will either need to bring him back in for an interview later, or if he decides not to join us, that will be a different story. And so the only candidate we'll be interviewing, we have two candidates we'll be interviewing tonight. Madeline Langfeld, a current committee member, whose term expires June 30th, right? She's here or not here?
Mayor Avasio. So that is the name of the current committee member whose seat is expiring.
She does expire, and she's not seeking.
Correct.
Sorry.
She's not.
Okay.
So we had three applicants, Nikita Kandaria, Karen Lang, and Christopher McBride, who's the incumbent who did apply for, to try to retain his seat, and he is ill. So we can schedule him at a different time. Nikita did, however, select to withdraw her application from consideration from both the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee and the Finance Advisory Committee, as she has been appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and believes that is enough to keep her busy and would prefer to stay on that.
Okay. Very good. So that means we just have Madeline Langfeld.
Karen Lang.
Oh. Karen Lang. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, Karen. Are you Karen? Yay! We got something right. If you could step up to the microphone, that would be great. Hello. Welcome, Karen.
Hi.
Hi. Yeah, you need to keep that microphone kind of close to your mouth or it doesn't pick up very well. It does look like it's on. I see the green light.
Okay. Can you hear me?
That sounds good.
Okay.
So to start with, you have a minute for an opening statement to share a little about yourself, your family, your involvement with any other organizations in town, et cetera.
Okay.
So you can begin anytime.
All right. So, again, good evening. My name is Karen Lang. I do serve on the Climate Action Committee, so I've been in this room before. But anyway, nice to see you. I live right around the corner. I've been in Corder Madera for 13 years. I'm here with my daughter. She's now launched. I've been retired for six years. I had a career in the energy business. I have a BA in economics and MS in energy management. I spent a third of my time in consulting, various aspects, including due diligence, et cetera. Two-thirds of my time in PG&E. I managed rate cases. Looked at incoming revenues, outgoing expenditures, and analyzed a lot of trends. I have quite a bit of quantitative background. And that's something that drew me to the Sales Tax Committee.
Okay. So we have three questions, and two minutes each are allotted for your time to respond. But you don't have to go all that way, and you can even go longer if you need to. What motivated you to apply for the Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee? And what specific skills, knowledge, and experience would you bring to that position?
Well, a couple of things motivated me. One is I found that my analytical expertise was useful in the Climate Action Committee. I think we've gone over some data, and we held a workshop, and it was gratifying to me to be useful. The other is I feel in this political climate that the more thorough analyses and respectful discourse and in general respect that can be brought to government is beneficial, and I want to do my part.
Okay. Thank you. What is your understanding of the responsibilities and role that you would play on this Oversight Committee within the government context?
I should go forward. Well, I believe it is really, really just to look at the revenues and expenditures, and I have experience in that. You can imagine, well, two things. In consulting, we'd have to do diligence, contracts, et cetera, market conditions. And then at PG&E, often in rate cases, you would need to document how monies were spent. They were allocated for a certain project, where the cost overruns came, where in the future, things are going up, et cetera. And it's not just looking at spreadsheets, but rather really looking at overall trends, trying to think of the future, et cetera. So that's what I see the role of the committee, as well as what my expertise would be.
Okay. And what do you hope to accomplish on behalf of the town of Corder Madera in your position?
Well, I would just say, sort of repeating similar, bringing analytical rigor to this committee and bringing a broader perspective, looking at trends. And also, I understand the sales tax has been in place for a while, but not all that long. And I do believe the citizens really need a, have the right to have a kind of an open book as to what's going on with the sales tax, why it's increasing. I understand a lot of things are going up. It's very necessary, but they really need to see the benefit of it. So I think more exposure to revenues and expenditures.
Okay. And you do have time for a closing statement, and I'm just wondering if you could include in that maybe a little bit about a confirmation that you do have the time available to take this on?
Let's see. Well, as I said, I've been retired for six years. I have done some other volunteer work. I work sometimes with the University of Pennsylvania Alumni Association, does pro bono consulting to nonprofits. But I've done that in the past. It's not a problem. I do bike a lot, but that's flexible. So yes, I do have the time, and I think my participation in the Climate Action Committee records would show that I think I've made most every meeting, with the exception of one or two over the past two and a half years.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in today and for your time. So I think that is the only candidate we have on the Sales Tax Oversight Committee for today. So I can bring it back to the council for any additional questions or comments or discussion about.
And Mayor Avasio, if I may, I just wanted to add that because we will have, as of today, we have two vacancies, and we only had one person attend an interview. I will be formally announcing that there is another vacancy or two, depending on whatever action is taken today. But I will be making that announcement to the public so that we can continue the recruitment process to try to get that position filled.
Okay.
Wait. Is Christopher McBride not seeking his seat again? I thought he was.
He is, but he's ill, and I didn't get a response back from him as to whether he wanted to interview in the future. He did say he would monitor to see if there's still a vacancy after tonight.
Okay.
When he contacted us, we had not received Nikita's withdrawal.
Right.
So I think he assumed that with his absence, the two remaining applicants would be appointed, and then there would be either no vacancies or one.
Okay. I thought that per our process, incumbents did not need to interview, so I thought that Christopher McBride would be eligible for reappointment, assuming he's not withdrawn his application, which it sounds like he hasn't. He just can't be.
Correct. It just got a little complicated because of Nikita's decision this afternoon. So with that, I guess, yes, you're right. We'd go back to the old process and make that recommendation for him to be appointed because at that point, he wouldn't be competing to try to keep his seat. His seat would basically remain. So I would follow up with him to make sure that he does want to continue with trying to get reappointed.
So could we go ahead and reappoint him and just give him the opportunity to rescind if he does not want to participate? Would that be all right? Just to expedite things and?
Yes. Thank you. That makes things a lot more efficient. I did not think of any of that. Thank you so much.
The solution.
Sorry, I'm a little stressed.
Okay. So any more conversation questions?
Yeah. Just one thing that I found really good that you said was the wanting to get the public a little more educated about the process. And I'm just wondering, do you feel or how would you communicate to laymen? And is there anything special that you could bring to our communications with the public that you think would be especially helpful in that endeavor?
Well, I did look at your town website, and you have some nice graphics on expenditures, et cetera. But I do know the accounting, public accounting. I know utility accounting is a little obtuse for the public. So certainly, in any presentation, we had a workshop on heat pump water heaters in the Climate Action Committee. It really is important to bring it down to what all residents can understand. But I think in terms of communication, it really, I found graphics quite useful on all the trends. And, I don't know. Website is one area you can do it. Emails are another. What forms are another. But yes, I kind of find graphics, but it's a bit tricky with all the accounting, I think, to show what's going on.
I agree. Thank you. Thanks very much. Anybody else with any follow-up questions? Okay. Then is there a motion or a?
I'll move that we appoint Christopher McBride and Karen Lang to the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. And I want to thank Karen for her service, not just on the Climate Action Committee, but for your willingness to step up and serve on another committee.
I'll second it.
And can we have a vote?
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Avasio.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much, Karen. Congratulations. Hope you have a great time. And you said you're a writer, so I thought, well, she can communicate, right? Writer. Oh, I thought you said writer. Okay, let's start up. No, I'm kidding. I thought you said writer. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to our second committee that we are working to fill. The Finance Advisory Committee consists of five members. This is actually a new committee, actually a reincarnated committee. We did have a previous finance committee, but we decided to do it a little bit differently. And so we're starting fresh. On February 18th, we adopted a resolution to form this new committee, and no appointments have been made. So there are five vacancies at this time. And there are, I guess this will be a decision that we should make. There are two-year terms, three-two-year terms, and two-one-year terms. So I think among the eight individuals, we will need to make that decision as well. So just a note for everybody. Nikita Kandaria has withdrawn because she went on to Parks and Recreation. Karen, are you still interested in seeking this position? Okay. And Christopher McBride is not here, just so we know that. And then.
Sorry?
I didn't think he applied.
Christopher withdrew from this.
Oh, he withdrew from this one. Okay. So we can pull him off of here. All right. And so is Bibhav here?
He's scheduled to interview at 5:49. So this is where I might have to do some pausing.
5:49? Okay. Does anyone want to have a game of pickleball or something while we wait? I mean, should we? Do we have to wait? Or should we interview whoever's here? Just move up. Okay.
Correct. We have Henry here, Larry Reed, Carl Spursum, and Karen Lang. And then Glenn Roth will be attending virtually.
Okay.
And that means out of the eight applicants, we have six, and we have a five-seat committee. So assuming that council selects five individuals, we'd have to initiate a process where we assign by lot. And so I would write down the names of the five individuals that council selects. And then someone will draw two names, and those two names will be given the initial one-year terms starting today through June 30th, 2026. And then the remaining three will be given the two-year terms.
So we don't have the opportunity to determine who gets the two-year terms? That's random.
Correct. In the resolution that created this committee, that's how council selected to make the first set of appointments.
Very good. So.
I have a question. And the persons that.
Oh. Thank you. Those who only get the one-year term, they will re-interview at the end of that one year?
Correct. They would apply and initiate the process over, and their application would, at that point, be for the two-year term.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, maybe should we just start from the bottom and go up? And start with Carl Spursum? Because I know he's here. I see him. Head on up.
Well, we do, based on the order of the agenda, we have Henry Faust scheduled to go first, and he is here, followed by Carl Spursum.
Okay. Henry Faust. Hi, Henry. Come on up.
Want me to just go one through four? Questions or?
Well, I'm supposed to ask them to you, but you can go right one to four if you want. I can, we'll just kind of monitor the time. She wants to run the timer on your responses.
Correct. And there is a printout of the questions that I emailed to you on Friday at the podium. And the timer will be right here on the screen.
Okay. So introduce yourself and take it away.
I'm, oh, I'm stuck here. But yeah, I grew up in Marin. I went to public schools, K-12. After that, I attended Cal Poly Humboldt University. I got my bachelor's in broadcast journalism and minor environmental studies. After graduating college, I biked across the country by myself. Stayed with dozens of hosts and saw sign of America. I never would have had I been traveling by car, plane, or train. Traveling at 12 miles an hour allowed me to immerse myself in every community I rode through. I stayed with dozens of hosts across the country during the aftermath of the 2016 election. I worked many jobs throughout the Bay Area. I worked as a United States Census worker in Corder Madera. Additionally, I worked for UPS, delivering all over the county and across Corder Madera. Nowadays, I work as a self-employed landscape designer in Marin, Sonoma, San Francisco, and these big counties. In addition, I hold an elected position on the College of Marin Board of Trustees. I represent District 5, which encompasses Corder Madera, Larksburg, Tarragon. I'm motivated to apply on this committee to see Corder Madera earn its rightful place as a standard bearer in the county on community connection, care, and financial abundance. We can become the most charming, vibrant, walkable, and connected town in the county.
Thank you very much. Running on to, going on to number two, what experience or expertise would you bring to the committee?
As a self-employed landscape designer, I balance my own budget to ensure the long-term financial sustainability of my company, Henry's Garden Hand. I have one of the lowest overhead of any landscaping companies in the county. I accomplished this through a variety of accounting decisions, but also through prudent operational choices. I have a rudimentary understanding of financial principles, bonds, investments, and the stock market. Additionally, I help oversee College of Marin's roughly $85 million annual budget as a member of the Board of Trustees. I'm learning a lot on the board about bonds, investment vehicles, and prudent financial planning. I look forward to applying what I've learned on the board to advocate for the town's best interests.
Thank you. Question number three. This committee was created with the purpose of advising the town council and its subsidiary district, the Marin Sanitary District Number 2, on fiscal policy, investment, and financing strategies, and other matters related to long-term fiscal health. What is your familiarity with the town and the SD2 financials? And how do you envision the committee working to fulfill its purpose? And what are some of the core responsibilities of the committee as you see it?
My familiarity with the town's council is from regularly attending meetings on a fairly regular basis through Zoom, as well as through my work as a committee member on the town's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, AKA BPAC. I realize the town has positively altered its course financially in the past decade through sound financial decisions. We need to carry this positive financial progress through the next generation. The town can accomplish this through a variety of ways. I've mentioned these fundraising techniques for the town in my application. For example, the real estate transfer tax of 2%, which could raise $3 to $7 million annually for the town in an equitable manner. This is an idea worthy of consideration and due diligence as it requires that the town incorporate as a charter city, joining Santa Rafael as a second charter city in the county.
Thank you. And the last question, other than your closing statement, is what financial challenges, if any, do you see in the town or the sanitary district in the next several years? And how do you envision proactively addressing them?
Largest portion of any budget is salaries for workers. Reason why salaries are so high is because housing costs are astronomical. If we built more housing to reduce prices in the town, we'd be able to reduce a significant amount of our municipal expenditures. For example, Central Marin Police Department is currently struggling to retain officers due to high housing prices in Marin and commuting problems with heavy traffic. The majority of the town's housing and infrastructure was built over half a century ago. Additionally, a large portion of the town's infrastructure is nearing replacement or servicing after 60 years of decay. I was a member of the Marin County Housing Element Stakeholder Committee in 2023. We will have to accommodate new housing development thoughtfully with an emphasis on walkability and mixed use that doesn't worsen our traffic crisis. In practice, this will mean widening sidewalks and building protected bike lanes along our terror roads. Moreover, it will mean planting drought-tolerant shade trees every 50 feet. To do so, you will need a large pot of infrastructure bonds that can't be threatened by federal WEMs or recessionary spending. This is where the progressive taxation structures come into play. They can help the town weather any financial storm and meet the most fundamental needs of our residents.
Thank you. And finally, there is time for a closing statement from you of a minute or so, if you'd like to give one.
None of what I'm proposing for long-term fiscal abundance has been tried and proven throughout this nation and worldwide. These progressive taxation structures are not radical. They're not risky. They are achievable, equitable, and will benefit all constituents. Town needs to align its policy with its values of democracy, diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. You will have to shift the culture to embrace these fundraising techniques as they're potent antidotes to a rising tide of regressive taxation in this country. Just this past year, regarding tariffs and beyond, Americans have experienced their highest increase in taxation in history. We need to avoid the pitfalls of austerity or manufactured scarcity. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for being here this evening. Really appreciate it. Thanks, Henry. So Lorena, the next up on the list is Carl Spursum in terms of the timing of the interview? Okay. Hello, Carl.
Hello, everybody. Carl Spursum, living in Madera Gardens.
Carl, could I ask you to just move the microphone closer to your mouth, please? Just if you can kind of scoot in a little bit or lift it up? I don't know if it goes any higher. He's tall. Oh, maybe it's okay.
We're good. Is that good? Is that good?
That sounds good.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. My interest, well, my education, I have an MBA from Northwestern in finance and marketing. I went to Cal here nearby. Been in the community since 1988. I've been on the Finance Committee and the Sales Tax Committee. My hope here is to continue what has been a very strong fiscal management of the town, much stronger than when I first moved here. much stronger than when I first moved here. I think the Town is going to be facing, you know, potentially a slowing economy, higher interest rates, and I think the importance of, you know, really monitoring the Town's finances and being able to react to that. I'll stop there. Number one.
Okay. Thank you. And the first question is to share a little bit about yourself. You've sort of mentioned some of those things, but what motivates you to want to be on the Financial Advisory Committee? And what do you hope to accomplish?
I've been on the committee when it first began. There were tough times with pension obligations and the like. I've got a long career in financial services. That's basically been my role, both in analysis and marketing. I've got my CFA. Pretty familiar with the Town's financial position at the moment. And I like providing inputs into the numerous municipal finance, pension reform, investment decisions in the Town. Like I say, I think the Town's come a long way, and my interest is commuted on that path.
Very good. The committee was created with the purpose of advising the Town Council and the Sanitary District on both fiscal policy, investment, and financing strategies and other matters. You've already mentioned your familiarity, but how do you envision the committee working to fulfill its purpose? And what do you think some of the core responsibilities of the committee should be?
I view the committee as really an advisory committee. Council makes the ultimate decisions, obviously, but you use a lot of consultants, a lot of advisors. I think the Financial Committee would be a good kind of melting pot, that's not the right term, but to really look at all these options, consider the options, really discuss them out loud, talk to the consultants, kind of get their ideas, any changes, any thoughts on that front. I think the Sanitary District Two was an interesting situation last year with the rates, Cordera having the lowest just sanitary rates in the entire county. And basically had to make some recommendations based on some of the proposals to somehow bring those rates up and pay for an enormous amount of district renewal, pipe replacement, pump replacements. So that's something I think is really important, given the fact of, you know, being in such a flood zone in the Town, being so much at risk for that. So, you know, being on the Sales Tax Committee helps kind of understand the infrastructure demands on the Town and how those are getting funded and how the sales taxes are being corralled for infrastructure and not let them spill off into other general fund expenses. So, and I also think we kind of got down the path of a five-year spending plan, infrastructure plan, which I think helped a lot in really outlining, looking forward, how these funds are going to be used. So that's my familiarity with it, and I'd like to continue that.
Thank you. What are the main challenges you see financially coming up for the Town and the Sanitary District in the next several years? How do you want to address them?
Well, how to address them is a big question. My concerns are the loss of Macy's, the loss of Rite Aid. This Town has lived on a very generous retail base. I think there's a little bit of erosion going on in that. You see a lot going on in the village, you know, stores, some new, some just boarded up and the like. So I'm concerned about that, which kind of really focuses back on the Town's finances and being smart about what we spend money on, how we budget money. I'm also concerned about sea level rise. This is not an insignificant issue, and it's enormously expensive. So, you know, looking to advise the Council or provide some support to looking for funding options for that, they're far and wide, but I know it's difficult. And the last I'll just mention is fire danger. I think upon Christmas Tree Hill, there is some undergrounding going on. It's difficult, it's very expensive, and I would love to see that program expand and work with PG&E and Comcast and AT&amp;T somehow share costs in getting these things underground. But fire risk is near the top of my list of worries.
Thank you. And if you'd like a one-minute closing statement?
No, I've enjoyed working with the Town. I've enjoyed working with all of you. I've got a good history with the Town, and yeah, I'd just like to continue it. I'm going to be here for a long time, and been here since 1988, so sticking around.
Thanks, Carl. Thanks very much. Lorena, who should we call next?
We have Glenn Roth, who is doing his interview virtually, and he has just been promoted to panelist. And Glenn, if you just turn on your video, we should be able to see you.
Hi there.
And we can hear you. Perfect.
Hello, Glenn. Welcome.
Hi there.
Virtually.
Thank you. Thank you.
How are you this evening?
I'm good. I'm good. I'm sorry, I can't be in person. I am out of the country with family on vacation.
Oh, well, good for you. I hope you're somewhere wonderful. Would you like to start with a one-minute opening statement about you and where you were on vacation or your family or?
So I have lived in Cordera for 11 years and been in Marin for 14. And I have two children in public schools in Cordera. And I'm here because I really love our community and our Town and have been looking for ways to give back.
Excellent. And the second question, I don't know if you have the questions there in front of you, do you? Or do you want me to read them?
If you can read them, that'd be helpful.
Okay. Question number two is what experience or expertise would you bring to the committee? We'd like you to include details of your general experience working with financial documents and your specific experience working with municipal finance, pension fund accounting, and investments.
Yeah. So I'll give just a brief overview of my background. So education, I graduated from Tufts University with a degree in political science, and I hold my MBA from MIT Sloan School of Management. And I began my career in the public affairs and political consulting space. But over the last 18 years, I've been in the high-tech sector. I work at Google. And the bulk of that work has been in strategic planning and partnerships. And I negotiate partnership agreements to either drive revenue, grow revenue, or mitigate risk. And when I look at the Town of Cordera, and I think about how I can play a role in this committee, I think about the different types of risks that we face within the committee, within our budget. And I think about financial risk around kind of what sort of financial tools should we be utilizing, as well as operational risk, which is, I think, part of what generated, sparked this committee around some of the equipment upgrades needed for the Sanitary District. There's also legal and compliance risk, which I think fortunately is less of an issue, thanks to the great staff that we have. But where I think I am probably best suited to play a role is in strategic risk, which is everything from flooding to earthquakes and cyber attacks, sort of what are the risks around the corner that we need to be more prepared for? I think, you know, I certainly have an MBA and understand how to read financial documents. I don't know that I bring any, you know, specialized knowledge in municipal bonds or debt financing. So I think where I can play the biggest role is really in thinking through our strategic risks and what we can do to be more prepared and have a budget that prepares us for the future.
Thanks very much. Question number three is the committee was created with the purpose of advising the Town Council and the Sanitary District on fiscal policy, investment, and financing strategies. What is your familiarity with the Town and the Sanitary District Two financials? And how do you envision the committee working to fulfill its purpose? And what do you see as the core responsibilities?
Yeah, so I agree that ultimately, the Town Council has to take in a wide range of inputs from different stakeholders. And given the breadth of things that the council members are focusing on, I think this committee is aimed to help advise them and play an advisory role to collect more information than they have time for or may be able to gather and provide added support to them. And when I think about sort of how the committee might be structured, I think probably the bulk of the committee should be focused on those financial and operational risks I touched on. You know, bringing in folks who do have, I'd say, more municipal experience around financing options, probably, you know, 60, 70% of the committee should be focused on those next two or three years and those immediate financial and operational risks. But I think probably having some portion, you know, 15, 20% of the committee's efforts being around strategic risks, thinking beyond the next two or three years, and where should we be focused and what sort of risks have we not spent enough time on? That's kind of how I think about how this might be structured. And, but as far as core responsibilities, I think important to have a diverse group contributing and dividing up those risks, both near-term and longer-term.
Thank you. Question number four, what financial challenges do you see the Town and Sanitary District facing in the next several years? And how do you envision proactively addressing those?
Yeah. So I think when I think about the financial risks, you know, there's certainly a concern around the degree to which our revenues come from a tax base from the retail sector that is under stress and I think will continue to be. When I think about operational risk, it is about upgrading our equipment, and certainly that is some of the valve meters and such with the Sanitary District. I think there's definitely a need to upgrade and have a resilient infrastructure. And when it comes to sort of strategic risk, it is some, I think we sit in a fairly risky environment between flooding, earthquake, fire, and increased cyber risk around cyber attacks to municipalities throughout the country. So those are some of the types of risks and issues that I think the committee should be focused on and helping advise the Council on. And, you know, answering how exactly we go about that is probably a much larger conversation. But I think it is about bringing in folks with different perspectives and having them be an extension of the Town Council to bring in, you know, different inputs from across the county, across the state, and working with the private sector as well. So the Town Council has as much information as possible to make the budgetary decisions they need to.
Thank you. And that brings us to a one-minute closing statement, if you'd like to make one.
Yeah, I mean, I think I was drawn to this committee, I would say, because though I know it has existed in the past, I know it's also sort of reconstituting the committee, and saw it as a sort of a clean slate to help contribute to and reimagine how this committee might help advise the Town Council on what is really a fundamental issue, which is our budget. I think our budget reflects both our priorities and our values as a community, and bringing together a broad cross-section of the community to help provide inputs around how that budget should be constructed and what sort of preparations we can be making as a community to keep our Town a great place to live and financially sound and have a strong, healthy future. So that is sort of what drew me and my interest to this committee, and I would love to contribute.
Thanks very much, and thank you for taking time away from your vacation for this interview. Appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
We do have a request for a question. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Attorney, is it okay too for us to let, allow a few to? Yes, go ahead.
Really two questions, but given that you have a full-time day job, is there any preference you'd have in terms of meeting times? And if you wanted to find yourself in a situation where you had to zoom in to the meeting, would you be able to fulfill the Brown Act requirement of letting anybody wander into your office, basically?
Oh, so I guess two things. You know, I, sort of in the spirit of keeping this committee diverse, I would imagine there would be different people with different sort of time constraints and issues. And so in that sense, I can be flexible and yes, might prefer evening meetings, but would be open to daytime. And I do, though I am not necessarily eager to have people walk into my home, I do work partially from home, so I imagine I could find a way to accommodate the strange realities of the Brown Act. Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Andrews, just to clarify, at present time, meetings do need to be in person. There is some legislation pending that may change that, but we don't know if it will pass.
Either way, I can, I do work from home part of the time and could be at the, you know, office, you know, in Cordera and able to join in person. I'm not too worried about that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And you can feel free to hang tight while we continue, if you'd like.
Okay.
So up next, who do we have? Lorena, I know you've got a specific order that's not the same as the report.
Yeah, so on the agenda, we have Larry Reed. Lawrence Reed.
Larry, do you go by Lawrence or do you go by Larry? Okay. Welcome, Larry.
Lawrence for official documents.
Okay. Very good. Would you like to start with an opening statement?
Yeah, just a little bit. So we've lived in the community for 35 years. We have both been very involved in the community around town. I'm probably best known as Becky Reed's husband. But, and I follow her example of, you know, getting involved in whatever the community needs. And so I enjoyed serving on the predecessor committee to this. I thought it was helpful with Fred and Jim and Carl, and enjoyed the work. And so I'd like to continue that work on this committee.
Question number two, what experience and expertise would you bring to the committee? If you can explain your general experience working with financial documents and specific experiences working with municipal finance, pension fund accounting, and investments?
So just a brief summary, I have an MBA from San Francisco State, spent a nearly 30-year career in financial services. I worked for California Federal Bank for 15 years, changed names and ownership a couple of times, but it was the same organization. I was there for 15 years in various capacities. My last five years, I was treasurer, so managing the balance sheet and interest rate risk. And then I had a couple of CFO jobs after that, and one for a company that got sold, and then for an investment management company where as CFO, I wasn't doing the investment management, I was working with the CEO to manage the company. And I worked there until I retired 15 years ago. I have, so I have experience, I am not an accountant, I've never professionally prepared financial statements, but I have read many, I've been responsible for analysis of potential acquisitions and things like that. So I've needed to be able to interpret financial statements. As far as that last line, I do have some background in pension fund accounting. In 2016-17, I served on the county Sil Grand Jury and actually chaired a report on public employee pensions. So I got very familiar at that time with, you know, CalPERS and the whole unfunded liability issue.
Thank you. The next question, I know you are familiar with the Town and SD Two financials because of your background, so maybe talk about how you envision the committee working to fulfill its purpose? And what do you think some of the core responsibilities of this committee should be?
Yeah. So I'm coming from the predecessor committee. So in that case, we were called upon from time to time by Todd and then by Adam for specific purposes. Sometimes, well, last, it seems like the last few years, we've been called upon to figure out what to do with a surplus, which is a great problem to have. But it will not always be that. And so I think the, the, the committee should be looking at risks, at what lies down the road. And we, I think we all on the committee encouraged Daria to do 10-year financial projections. And the value of that exercise isn't to try to get year 10 right, but to look at trends, to look at the things that may turn into problems rather than suddenly discovering them. So I think that that work should continue. I think there's a couple more steps that need to be taken to have that be a useful document for us. But I think that looking far down the road is an important thing for us.
Thank you. And you've sort of touched on this already, but maybe a little bit more about the financial challenges that you see for the Town and the Sanitary District?
Yeah.
And how do you envision addressing those?
Yeah. I mean, we came through the pandemic very well. We have been in a very enviable position for these last few years. And so, you know, I think that we need to work to maintain that. It's not, it's not going to happen by itself. We can't just coast on that. And I think that probably the biggest issue aside from, you know, what the federal government is going to do and how that will affect us, I think, is really staffing. That's the big number in the P and L. And so, you know, staffing growth, compensation growth, and pension liability growth is something that's going to have to be managed very closely.
Thank you. And that brings us to a closing statement, if you'd like to make one.
I don't think I have anything else. So.
Well, thank you. Thanks very much, and thanks for coming in. Any, any questions for Larry while he's up there? Anybody?
Okay. So we will move on to, do we have? So next on the list, we had Nikita, who withdrew, and then following her, we have Bibhav. And he specifically asked for a time slot after 5:30.
Okay.
And I don't think he's here, but we do have Karen Ling here, if you'd like to move that up.
Karen, come on up.
Did I skip the opening statement or?
Well, you look familiar. Would you like to start with an opening statement?
Well, you know, I think I've introduced myself and my qualifications. I will say, while I don't have as much expertise in municipal finance, I'm quite familiar with utility finance, which I've already said. So maybe I'll just sort of leave it at that.
Okay. And what experiences would you bring to this specific committee? And And please include details of general experience working with financial documents and municipal finance, pension fund accounting, and investments.
Again, I can relate it to the utility space in which I worked, quite familiar with their financials, et cetera, affected, ended up affecting our rates, every single rate case. Capital versus expense, huge. Utility would qualifies as what, what current interest rates are, what our allowable rates are, happens in a regulated environment, certainly familiar with pensions, et cetera, and as well as operating expense trends.
Thank you. Question number three relates to your familiarity with the town's current finances and the sanitary district two's finances, and how you envision the committee working to fulfill its purpose and to address sort of what you think the core responsibilities of the committee should be.
Well, again, I, my familiarity is pretty much limited to reviewing the website, you know, the various revenues and expenses. I guess I feel I'm going to repeat some, what some of the other candidates have said. Certainly, there is a need for overall financial guidance in terms of financial expertise. But what I see is really more the strategic sort of stress testing that I think people a step away can bring. And I really wanted to say, the reason I'm sort of applying is from experience at PG&E. And I mean, I did do some due diligence and consulting, but I witnessed PG&E go through two bankruptcies. And I was also, you know, on the analytical team. Every single year, we did a stress test of sorts, huge. We would go for earthquakes, tsunamis, pipeline breakages, supply constraints. There was some fire, but not much. They missed it every single time. And we would have outside consultants come in, and the lessons were always, think bigger. If you think it's just a standard deviation away of risk, it's not. You know, think again. And I do not want to see that happen to this town. There is fire risk, and that could affect revenues as well as expenditures. There is flood risk, same thing. Host of others that I'm sure could be uncovered. And I see that, you know, along with, you know, expertise in, you know, financial optimization is really the big picture of what we could face. And that's what I see as being important and what I've experienced in.
Thank you. Thank you, Timer, for going up. The fourth question is what financial challenges do you see the town and the sanitary district facing in the next couple of years? I think you sort of touched on that, but how do you envision proactively addressing them? What can actually be done?
What can actually be done? Well, if you know what the risks are, it can help direct some expenditures, although I'm sure you're limited. You know, if you have a surplus, et cetera. But I think mainly it is trying to prepare for the long term, not being caught unawares. Sometimes there's not a lot you can do, but to the extent you can get prepared, et cetera. I know, I'm good in my utility expertise, but for instance, undergrounding might be a solution, but there are many others.
Right. And then would you like to make a closing remark for a minute or so, or?
I guess it's just that, you know, I kind of made it. I spent, I don't know, weeks, two or three weeks every year on risk management and seeing, you know, both in the commodity space, larger utility market space. And there's a lot of lesson learned there about not, not opening your eyes as to what, what things could change. So I'd like to, would love to work with people to, to bring that sort of perspective to Corte Madera so we can be prepared.
Okay. And just one follow-up from me.
Sure.
Since you've just been appointed to the sales tax oversight committee, can you talk a little bit about your time availability and your, your ability to spend time looking into this?
I am retired. As I said, I didn't say I wrote, I actually ride.
Ride, okay.
I do, you know, I do retirement things, but I do have time for this. And yes, I have, I have taken on consulting projects that are almost full-time, yeah, in the past.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions from the council? All right, Karen, thank you for your time. And so we need to wait for our next candidate to come in, is that right? We told him 5:40?
That's correct. All candidates were, or applicants were informed that they can attend and since the start of the meeting and listen to all of the interviews during the open meeting. I did text Bibav, and he has not responded. In the past, council has taken a break, and then we reconvene and continue with the remaining interviews and then proceed with deliberation. And, uh, Bibav?
Oh, there he is. Boy, your timing's good. Your timing's really good. Come on up to the microphone. We were just looking for you, so thank you very much. Can you pronounce your name for us?
It's Bibav Chapagin. However, I also go by my initials B.C. If that makes it easier, yes.
That's nice. Okay, Bibav.
Yeah.
Can you give us an opening statement, just a minute about yourself and your family or what you do here in Corte Madera?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. So my name is B.C., and I go by my initial, sorry, my name is Bibav Chapagin, but I also go by B.C., like you said, right? I have a bachelor's in accounting from Ohio Wesleyan University. I am also a active certified public accountant, a CPA. I recently moved to Corte Madera in 2024, and ever since moving, I've been looking for meaningful ways to engage with the community and contribute to the committee. And I thought this opening was a perfect opportunity for me, given my background in financial reporting, accounting, and financial analysis. By joining the committee, I hope to, you know, support the town's financial decision-making. Happy to answer any questions or?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what experiences and expertise specifically you would bring to the committee, especially your experience working with financial documents and specific experience working with municipal finance, pension fund, accounting, and investments?
Great. Thank you for that question. So my background is in corporate finance. I started my career as a financial auditor with Ernst &amp; Young. It's a global multinational accounting firm in the Washington DC area, where I audited companies ranging from small private entities to large public multinational corporations. So I've been in the accounting industry for the last 14 years, where I have experiences, you know, dealing with financial statements, oversight of financial statements, advising clients on accounting topics. Currently, I work as the Director of SEC Reporting at BioMarin and San Rafael, where I provide oversights of the quarterly and annual financial statements that are filed with SEC. I know it's not directly correlated with municipal finances, but I strongly believe the skill set that I have and my work experiences will closely align with what the committee is looking for.
Very good. And what is your familiarity with the town and sanitary district two's financials? How do you envision the committee working to fulfill its purpose? And what do you think the core responsibilities of a finance committee should be?
Similar to the previous, my response, and I do not have much experience with the towns or the SD two's financials. However, at the end of the day, being an accountant and an active CPA, a financial statement is a financial statement. And I've reviewed and analyzed hundreds, if not thousands, of financial statements, the quarterlies and annual statements for companies and entities of varying sizes. So I believe the skill set that I'll bring would be very valuable in assessing the financial health of the town and also to help support the committee in making sound financial decisions. I think your last question related to what I think is the main purpose. I think the main purpose of the committee should be to enhance the financial aspects of the town, but also, more importantly, to gain the trust of residents to be transparent about the financial priorities of the town.
Thank you.
Yep.
Question number four is about the financial challenges facing us in the future. What do you see coming down the pipe? And how would you envision proactively addressing those things?
Thank you for that question, too. Some of the challenges that come to my mind are increasing costs, operational costs, inflation in general. Another that I could think of is just uncertainty around funding from state and federal governments. And lastly, just risk related to climate change, you know, such as flooding, wildfires, all those risks that could impact a town and community like ours. Some of the solutions that I could think of to address these would be, you know, obviously having a long-term, forward-looking financial plan to help mitigate these, see if we can identify efficiencies and cost-saving measures. And lastly, just having a transparent, candid, and open dialogue with the residents about the town's financial health and the priorities.
Thank you. And that brings us to your closing statement, if you'd like to make one.
Actually, I don't have a closing statement, but thank you for, you know, for the opportunity to interview and happy to answer if there are any questions now or later.
I just wonder what brought you to Corte Madera? You said you just moved here in 2024. What, what brought you to our town?
I have a family that lives in the city, my sister, I have a niece that's 14 months old, you know? So those are the people that attracted me to, you know, to, I would say, the state of California, but obviously it's a beautiful place here, and, and also my job in San Rafael.
And you have time to commit to the schedule of meetings and, well, actually, there isn't a schedule of meetings for this one. This is more, are you ready at a moment's notice to come in?
I should be able to make time, you know? If not virtually, I should be able to attend some. But yeah, I think I heard that there isn't a set schedule or like timeline on when the committee meets. But even if it's on a monthly basis, as needed basis, I should be able to make time.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Yeah, in terms of the time, would you prefer it being, say, between nine and five? Or would it be better to come from five to seven or eight at night in terms of just juggling your schedule and your day job?
I would prefer the latter, the seven to nine, because my nine to five will probably also is also demanding, and there might be some time conflicts or challenges, so seven to nine would be a preferred choice for me.
Any other questions from council? No? Most?
Well, not really. Not necessarily a question for the folks here, but I did want to bring up, is we don't have a schedule yet, and so what we're asking them to commit to, we're not really sure of. But one thing I wanted to toss out there is that as the council is reviewing things that are, that have to do with budgets, which is a lot, which is very often, we are looking at budgets and funding of various things. I think it would be helpful if members of this committee either could on a rotating basis or have someone designated to sort of always be checking in, keeping up with the agendas, and if need be, you know, you could log in for these meetings that have to do with finance, just so that if the council does need the, your assistance, it's not like, okay, now I've got to, this is the first time I'm hearing of it, is when we ask for your help. So I'm not really sure how we would, you know, couch that for now, but I did want to mention that to the council, that whether or not they felt that that was an important aspect of being on this committee.
I think it is, and Park and Rec, I think, does that, hopefully they still do it. They actually have a schedule of like the committee members and then who's scheduled. They're like assigned to the town council meetings, either in person or that you can listen to them on Zoom, so they can report back to Park and Rec about anything Park and Rec related. It's almost the same type thing here.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to throw that out there so that people would know. And I don't know that, I don't know if everyone else feels that way. That was just me and.
Right, I know in the past, issues would come up, members of council would say, hey, what does the ad hoc finance committee say about this? And so then they send me an email or write an email and say, what does the finance committee say?
Yeah, and it's also financial, the sanitary district as well. I, that was the big thing that where the finance committee came in really helpful when we were being asked to put out $34 million in bonds or something, and I, I am not a financial person, so I was like, how do I make that decision? Find out what the financial committee thinks. So I, I see you as my, my joint communal financial brain. So hopefully you'll be staying, any on the committee will be staying up on sort of what's going on, so you can jump in when needed. Well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
And so does that bring us to the end of our, we had Karen, everybody who is on the list, is that correct?
That's correct.
So council, what is your pleasure? Anybody? Fred? Jim?
Yeah, I'm Carl Spursum, Glenn Roth, Larry Reed, B.C., and Karen Lang.
That was my list as well.
I'm okay with those all, so I think we get the diversity there because with Larry and Carl having the past history, Karen having the overlap with the sales tax override, I think that helps also. And then we have two newer members, so I think it all fits together.
Can you say your list again?
It does sound like a strong.
Okay, so Henry.
Going down the list, Bibav, Karen, Larry, Glenn, Carl.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much what I had, too. Yeah, I think that's, you know, there, I just see a lot of, I, I feel inspiration from Henry, and I feel sort of a, you know, broad, broad and distant view from Glenn, and I just think a lot of good background. And I think it would be really good to, yeah, I think this would be a good team to, you know, balance perspectives.
Okay, can I get a motion on that?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Sure, and I believe that's a motion to appoint Bibav Chapagin, Karen Lang, Larry Reed, Glenn Roth, and Carl Spursum to the Finance Advisory Committee.
I'll do a second.
Second.
And a roll call vote.
Okay, Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor of Oseo?
Yes.
And I think now we can do the lot for determining which two appointees will get the one-year terms.
I'm just, so even we can't ask them if there's anybody who would prefer only a one-year term to start? Or, or yes or no? Or we just take it by lottery? Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
Unless anyone knows you can only do it for one year. Okay, good. Nobody wants to interview again in just one year.
Don't we take them to the top of the stairs and throw them off?
Rochambeau might be more fun. Oh, I get to pick?
I run one each. I wrote each, each appointee's name.
You'll pick two of them?
Yes.
These are the one-year terms? Okay. I even get to read them. The one-year terms.
And the Oscar goes to?
Glenn Roth, who is online, is a one-year term. And Carl Spursum, a one-year term, Carl seemed to know it. Thank you all very much. And I would just like to say something to Henry. Your cross-country bike ride sounds amazing. What an amazing accomplishment. And I've seen your work on the BPAC and I think you have a great future in Corder Madera. Hope you stay involved and, and do all kinds of things for the town. Really appreciate your input and, and your being here tonight. And thank you all. Karen, you, you got both committees. Good luck. Thanks all very much. And so I think we will adjourn now until our meeting starts at 6:30, right?